Seeing at 6:00 PM, I'd like to call the November 16, 2022, regular meeting of the Kenai City Council Order, and if you would, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. Clerk, please call it all.
Vice Mayor Basden?
Here.
Student Representative Thibodeau?
Here.
Mayor Gabriel?
Here.
Councilmember Dothett?
Here.
Councilmember Sonar?
Still here.
Councilmember Naxted?
Here.
Councilmember Askin?
Here also.
And Councilmember Winger?
Present.
Thank you. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman, we'll get to agenda approval. I'd like to call attention to your laydown you should have in front of you with requested additions to the packet. Action, item D, add to item D two, public hearing resolution number 2022-76, amendment memo requested by the city manager. Action, add to item J one, administrator reports, city manager, 2022 annual personally used fish report, requested by the city manager. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move for approval of the agenda with the two add items, D two and J one, requesting unanimous consent.
I'll second.
Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, the agenda is approved. Next, we have the consent agenda. Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move for approval of the consent agenda and request unanimous consent.
Second.
Are there any requested changes to the consent agenda from the body? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please read the consent agenda into the record?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Approval of the regular meeting minutes of November 2, 2022, introduced by the city clerk. New business action approval bills to be ratified, brought to you by the administration. New business action approval and non-objection to a liquor license renewal for Playa Azul, brought to you by the city clerk. Ordinance number 3321, 2022, repealing the Kenai Municipal Code, Section 13.30.030, night parking prohibited, 13.30.050, signs bearing the legend, and 13.30.100, parking prohibited on Kenai Avenue, and reenacting and renaming Kenai Municipal Code 13.30.030, street parking prohibited to allow greater flexibility in regulating street parking in the city, brought to you by the legal department. Ordinance number 3322, 2022, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the general fund for costs in excess of budgeted amounts for public work, street lighting repairs and maintenance, brought to you by the administration. Ordinance number 3323, 2022, accepting and appropriating grants from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security passed through the State of Alaska Department of Military and Veterans Affairs for the purchase of public safety radios, police in-car video systems, and a cybersecurity assessment, brought to you by the administration. Public hearing on all three ordinances will be December 21, 2022, and that is your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to the consent agenda, which was just right into the record? Is there anybody online?
No hands raised.
No hand raised. No hand raised, nobody online. Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection from the body? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. Next up, we have a schedule. We don't have any scheduled public comments this evening, so we're on item C, unscheduled public comments. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda at this time? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record, please.
My name's David Hig.
Just your address, address for the record. Yeah, if you want to turn that microphone on, just hit the button on top there. Make sure it's on, if you would.
Okay. Again, my name is David Hig. Thank you for this opportunity. You guys may have remembered I was here quite some time ago about grand jury issues that you helped us with, passing a resolution. I'd like to report that earlier this summer, I was invited by a special grand jury to testify about the, some of the corruption that I've given you evidence to, testified to them for four hours. The main issue, one of the main issues was our judge investigator in the state, Marla Greenstein. She's been there for 33 years. I asked the grand jury to investigate her, gave her, gave them evidence of what we wanted investigated, also gave them evidence and a request that they investigate those who should have done something about her decades ago. The last thing I did during this first four hours of testimony is I recommended that the Department of Law attorneys that were advising the grand jury be replaced with independent counsel because the Department of Law was implicated in what was going on. About three months later, here maybe a month or so ago, I received a subpoena from the grand jury. When I got the subpoena, the clerk actually said that they had issued a bunch of subpoenas. Why, the main reason I'm here today is the subpoena I got was issued at the request of the grand jury, but it was from an independent prosecutor. So apparently, the grand jury took my advice, got rid of the Department of Law attorneys, and hired a private attorney. The problem is, is that when this guy was employed by the Department of Law as the head of their Office of Special Prosecutions, he's the exact same guy who investigated my criminal complaint against Marla Greenstein. I called him and said, how can you be independent counsel for a grand jury investigating someone you previously investigated and determined there was nothing wrong? He told me that he forgot he had investigated Marla Greenstein and thus had never told the grand jury. I don't really know what to do about this, but I would like you folks to think about it and to maybe consider helping with a, maybe another resolution, letter of support. Last night, I kinda, I went before the Borough Assembly and asked them the same thing. So anyway, that's it. You have any questions?
Any questions of Mr. Hig? Councilmember Sonar?
Are the court proceedings going on now? I mean, is this case happening now?
Yes, there's, the grand jury's met, I think, to my knowledge, probably at least five or six times, and they're scheduled to meet in December again, yes. And so, my, my fear, or my concern, and virtually everybody that I've talked to, is that we want a clean slate from beginning to end with the grand jury investigation, and they have someone now advising them that if the grand jury finds that Marla Greenstein's a bad apple, the next thing I asked is that anyone who investigated her and gave her Clean Bill of Health should be investigated, and he is that person, and he's advising the grand jury as to all legal questions, and I don't believe any of the grand jurors are an attorney. And so, you know, I, I believe the grand jury tried to, that believed me that they should have independent counsel, and they tried to get it, and now they have far more, I don't know, bias or un-independent or whatever. So, and to be honest, I don't really know what to do because I don't have an ability to go in before the grand jury when I want to, you know, they are, I'll also say this, and if I need to, I think I get some more time, so if I, I don't want to take up all your time right now. The Funny River Community Association Board wrote a letter protesting this. One of their members tried to get at the grand jury, went into the Kenai Courthouse. The clerks would not give it to the grand jury. They said that's the district attorney has to do that. He went to the district attorney. He said he would not give it to the grand jury. He called the, this Clinton Campion, who is now the grand jury's counsel, he wouldn't give it to the grand jury. And so, we're now left with, you know, you know, kinda, it's kinda hard to get to the grand jury. And anyway, I'll, I'll maybe, I think I get another opportunity later on in the meeting to maybe say some more. I'll, you know, I guess I could tell you a little more then, and I've got some of the documents, like my, I got a copy of my subpoena. I have the letter from Campion way back when, saying that he investigated Marla Greenstein, gave her Clean Bill of Health. So I have some documentation that can prove, prove some of our concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hig. Is there anybody else from the general public that would like to address the council at this time on any item that is not on the consent agenda or the regular agenda? Hello, Marian.
Hi. Marian Nelson, Kenai Arts Center. If you still kept, keep, are still taking the paper as opposed to the digital version, although I'm sure there's some pictures in there too, you see on the front page at work, the Arts Center's opening is part of that because of the mural show that's going on right now, which is not like any other mural show, for sure. I'm sure of that, because we staple the canvas to the wall, otherwise known as mural cloth. It's a lightweight canvas that is lightly primed. It's stapled, and last year when we did this, we found out the hard way that we really, and we know, people who paint, have painted on canvas, know that you've gotta put it in some water to begin with because there's, it's, it's canvas. It's not nylon or something like that. It's gonna shrink a little bit. It's gonna size up a bit. So, we had that problem last year in the corners of all places where it kinda did us dirt with water and acrylic paints. That was an interesting thing. It was a big oops, not a, not overwhelming one, but, so we took care of that this year by going, when the canvas was installed on the wall. This is interesting to us, maybe not so much to you, but anyway, we went around on the wall and heavily stapled it, putting it on the corners or in the bump outs and so forth and so on, and sprayed a little, little bit of water as it went along. So, avoided all the issues, did a little different job of sectioning off the spaces in the, on the wall for the 20-some artists to participate. And then the first meeting that they all have together is to choose a number. They just choose whatever comes out of the jar, and there's the number on the wall, and then that's the process right there where it begins. They say, okay, I'm next to you, you're next to me, blah, 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 and away we go. And that's where the compromising and collaborating comes in, and they start painting that night or the next day, and it's, that show is up till the middle of December. It's incredible. Oh, God, I'm getting emotional. Anyway, we had a big opening and sold a few pieces. Everything, almost everything is for sale, which is not where we started three shows ago on Tyvek. That seems like a joke at this point, but it's, it's come a long ways, and I'm sorry. Oh, I hate my emotions. Anyhow, there's some really great paintings on the walls, and some of them are huge. I mean, they're almost this whole section up to the frame of the screen here, the corner, and others are smaller, of course. So, there's a, there's a variety of, of styles of subject matter, but again, they've all been told, they're told at the beginning to think about what kind of price you want to get, hope to get, and they have been selling. So that's really quite a turnaround. So, right now, we paid for the canvas, and we'll go forward from there. We should be able to at least come out with a little bit more money out of this show than we normally do. Then comes closing the center in the middle of December, because we will be grinding the floor in the, all of the gallery as well as in the gift gallery, and made the decision to change what we had been thinking a while ago to a black floor. It's gonna be quite a dramatic underpinning of all the shows. That butt-ugly carpet is going away, and because our executive director, Alex Riddletzky, shoots 360 images of each show, and it's posted on our website. And so, here's this, these great images, all expertly hung, I might add, and then there's that crappy carpet that's there. So now, we'll have a shine, relatively shiny black underpinning, and you can imagine your mind's eye how much better that will be. And going forward, there'll be an individual show, and February is still kinda up in the air, and then we go on with our usual calendar as well as shows we're not quite sure of. So, that's an update. Rasmussen Grant, the Rasmussen Grant pays for the floor grinding, as I know I've mentioned before, and then we are definitely going to apply and work toward a big-time grant to deal with the whole darn building, as Scott Curtin can attest. It's, gives us pause, to be sure. That's not like, and those of you who've worked with grants, which is most of you, you know, that's, you don't get the grant. You go out and raise the money, and then you come and talk to us about how much we need to give you to, to, to match. We know approximately what it would be, but proof will be in the pudding, for sure. Any questions from anybody?
When you close at the middle of December, how long will you be closed for, Mary?
Oh, just till 1st of January.
Okay, very good.
Unless there's some glitch there. I mean, that show can, there's some wiggle room there. That's an individual who's on the board who understands what's going on, and her, her particular show is unique, for sure, and it's a one-person situation, so it's a flexible situation for us to reposit it as far as that side of it goes.
Okay. Any questions from Ms. Nelson?
Nothing? Come on. Nothing, okay? Pardon me? It's, it's been very varied. Tomorrow won't be any different.
Thank you, Marian. Is there anybody else from the general public that would like to speak to the council at this time at any item that's not on the agenda or consent agenda? Nobody online, nobody in chambers? Seeing none, we'll move down the, down our agenda here. And next up, we have public hearings. Item D one, resolution number 2022-75, authorizing the purchase of real property located, real property described as Lot 7, Block 19, original townsite of Kenai, located within Section 5, Township 5 North, Range 22 West, Seward Meridian, and designated as Kenai Peninsula Borough Parcel Number 04710307, from Julian Iria, Etelle, and Dan Hildebrand, for the public purpose of including the property in the bluff erosion restoration project and determining that the public interest will not be served by an appraisal. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to adopt Resolution 2022-75.
I'll second that.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Resolution number 2022-75? Seeing nobody online or in the chambers, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberations from council? Councilmember Basen?
Thank you, Mayor.
Or Vice Mayor Basen?
Have the city manager give us an overview.
Mr. Osterherner?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Vice Mayor Basden. So, this is a parcel that we would like to acquire that is necessary for completion of the bluff stabilization project. We've been acquiring properties now for about seven years in support of this. This is the last property that we need approval from council to purchase. There's several others that we're going to be pursuing easements on, but this is the last one for purchase. Actually, Mr. Bloom has taken the lead on, on this one, this particular parcel, and has been working with the landowners for almost a year now, and we finally got to the point where, that the, the four mutual parties that are owners of this have agreed to sell it for $1,200. So, again, this is in support of the bluff stabilization project and appreciate council's support.
Further deliberation?
Requesting unanimous consent.
Thank you. Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, Resolution 2022-75 is adopted. Next up, we have Resolution number 2022-76, authorizing a contract for employee healthcare effective January 1, 2023. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Askin?
I move that we enact Resolution 2022-76.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Resolution number 2022-76? Seeing nobody online or in the chambers, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberations from council? Vice Mayor Basen?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Maybe again, have the city manager kinda go over what we're looking at here.
Mr. Osterherner?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Vice Mayor Basden. So, administration, and actually, I'd like to start by thanking Ms. Christine Cunningham, our HR Director, and Terry Eubank, Finance Director. They did the heavy lifting on all of this, have spent off and on, you know, time over the last probably three months looking to get our health insurance renewed. The objective here was to actually get our insurance on a calendar year basis, which accomplishes a couple things for us. We have previously been on a fiscal year basis, and it makes it difficult for the administration of the insurance, but having it on a calendar year also opens us up for, in the future, for the possibility of having different types of programs that we can't currently offer when we're on a fiscal year basis, such as a healthcare savings account. So, one of our objectives was to get it on a calendar year, and this resolution will accomplish that, get us on that calendar year. So, through, through this process, we've been working with our broker, our insurance broker, and they've been providing input and advice and also getting quotes from the different providers. There is an amendment memo that is in your laydown packet that actually describes where we're at right now and will help us fill in the blanks in the resolution, assuming the council is supportive of those amendments. To summarize the important components of what's in that memo, administration is recommending that we renew with Primera, which is our current insurance provider. We are also recommending to change it slightly to what our plan is now, to what's called an optiplex plan, which is a plan that actually is sort of a hybrid between a fully insured plan, which is what we're under now, and a self-insured plan, which is similar to like what the hospital or the borough has. This provides some additional flexibility to the, to the city. It also allows us to share in any cost savings at the end of the calendar year. So, if our claims, if our employees' claims are less than what the premium anticipated, we will share in those savings with Primera themselves. So, we're recommending Primera. We're recommending the optiplex plan. The interesting component of this is right now, Primera has come to us with a proposal for a 10% reduction in the cost to the city, which in the six years I've been here, we've never seen a reduction in a renewal. And the reason why this reduction happened, I can, I can say safely, is that we had a competitive insurer come in and offer to provide health insurance at a 20% reduction. So, once Primera realized someone was coming in and sharpening their pencil, providing us a 20% reduction, Primera came back and said, well, we'll give you a 10%. So again, we are recommending to go with Primera, which is only 10%, which means that it's going to cost the city more to insure our employees through Primera than it would with this competitor. The competitor is Moda, which is an insurance company that is primarily based out of Oregon. It does have a presence in Alaska, but they only insure about 1% of the insured folks in the state of Alaska, so their, their footprint is relatively small. Alternatively, Primera has a, the largest footprint in the state of Alaska, and their preferred provider network is extensive. We were concerned with the possibility of going to Moda, the unknown repercussions to our employees because that preferred provider network is so much smaller than Primera's. There's also some concerns about the way that they would, would cover prescription medications for folks, specifically those medications that are specialty, which can cost an extraordinary amount of money. So the reality is there were just a lot of unknowns with moving to Moda, and the reality is we didn't get the Moda quote until last week. It didn't give us enough time to thoroughly analyze any impacts that we would see as a city. So, if we were to renew with Primera, the intent of the administration would be that the Finance Director and the HR Director would continue to work over the course of the next year to determine if Moda is a viable alternative. This assumes that when we go to renew next year, that Moda is still as hungry as they are now, which I'm anticipating that they will be, but it will give us time to look at this and determine whether or not it makes sense to make that change. We wind in tonight wide, eyes wide open, recognizing that this decision is the end result, is it's gonna cost the city more money to insure with Primera than Moda. But particularly in this environment, when we talk about recruitment and retention of employees, we think it's critically important that we continue to provide high-quality health, healthcare, and this is our best way to do that. One other thing that we are providing that could cut, could create some additional cost savings to the city with this renewal is that we are offering a higher deductible plan for employees. Right now, the, the deductible plan we have is a $2,000 deductible. We are offering a $3,000 plan as well. So, that is some additional, additional option for employees. It's important to note that we also did look at the possibility of providing HSA eligible plans for our employees, and again, when we looked at it, there's still some things that we're uncomfortable about as far as impacts that might have, not only to the employees in this case, but also to the city's overall cost of insuring our employees. And that's all I have, but I'm happy to answer questions.
So just for clarification, Mr. Osterherner, so we would be canceling our current plan effective January 1, and this would kick in this plan for, to flip over the calendar year?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Yes, it would cancel it. We'd, we'd have an open enrollment for employees. It would be an active open enrollment, so every employee would have to actively enroll in healthcare. Again, that would happen in December, and the current plan would terminate at the end of the year, and the new plan would become active January 1.
Very good. Thank you. Before we move on, is there anybody willing to move the proposed amendments, so we can have that on the floor as we're discussing this? Councilmember Naxted?
I could, unless anybody else wants to. In our packet on page three of three of the laydown, there's some recommended amendments. I'm gonna read from that, and so I'll, I'll go through all of them, and the First Amendment is in the sixth whereas. It's really a fill-in-the-blanks, adding Primera Blue Cross Blue Shield of Alaska and $2,783,821. I amend Section One to read by filling in the blanks, Primera Blue Cross Blue Shield of Alaska and $2,783,821. Add a new Section Two that reads that the City Council authorizes a health plan structure that includes an HRA maximum contribution to achieve a net employee deductible of $500, individual, and $1,000 for employee with independence. And then renumber the following sections as appropriate. Request unanimous consent.
So for clarification, I think you said the sixth whereas. Did you mean the fifth whereas?
No, I didn't.
Oh, is that a new? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. My bad. I guess we're reading off of two different pages. I'm sorry.
Since I have ten fingers, I can.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks for the clarification. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion on the amendment? Is there an inclination maybe to ask for unanimous consent? Oh, you did. Unannounced consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, the motion is approved?
Oh, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember or Vice Mayor Beazin?
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to ask the city manager a couple of questions, if I may.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we get the amendment totally approved before we move on.
I'm sorry, that was unanimous for the amendment. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm in your way. Sorry.
Unannounced consent was approved for the amendment, and there was no objection. So we now have before us Resolution Number Two Thousand Twenty-two dash seventy-six as amended. Vice Mayor Beazin.
Thank you, Mayor. So, city manager Ostrander, so if I'm looking at this based on these numbers, if you would have went with the other insurance agency, it'd have been $270,000 less annual price, based on the 10% to 20% roughly, I guess, is that, if I'm looking at this. And I don't have a problem. I understand why you're doing it because of our knowledge and how Primera has the market here. I hate to reward a company that, basically the only reason why they're bringing this down is because there's now competition, so it shows that they have overcharged us for how much for how many years, and now we're rewarding them. I don't like that happening, but I understand why, and why you're doing this.
Mr. Ostrander.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, Vice Mayor Beazin. Generally, that, those are, that's close to the right numbers. I don't know if Mr. Eubank or Ms. Cunningham has the exact difference between the two. I know I've got a spreadsheet upstairs that does, but generally, yes, you're accurate. I think the number's slightly less than 270, but it's in that ballpark.
Further discussion?
I was just going to ask, first of all, I totally agree with working with somebody we know. The difference between network and in-network and out-of-network providers is huge and can cause great hardship on employees that don't have providers that all of a sudden, one insurance company to the other doesn't represent, and the cost can be astronomical. So I can definitely see where we're at, and I hope we can maybe look over this and maybe next year, if for some reason we feel that it is comparable, to be able to save the additional 10%, maybe we can research that more. But I totally agree with this decision at this point. It makes logical sense to stay safe with who we have for providers, for sure.
Vice Mayor Beazin.
Thank you, Mayor. And for the city manager, just for the public, I don't know what the public, some people may know what a, may not know what a HSA is, and that's what we're changing to, correct? Could you define what that is for everybody?
Mr. Ostrander.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, Vice Mayor Beazin. So we have an HRA, which is a healthcare reimbursement account right now. And essentially what that does is it takes our plan, which as I said, is a $2,000 deductible for an individual, $4,000 for a family. What it does is it lowers that total deductible that the employee is responsible to, or responsible for, to $500. So for an individual, for example, the deductible is 2,000. The city applies $1,500 towards that deductible through a healthcare reimbursement account so that they're only responsible for $500. This is the same that we've done in the past. HRA is something that we've had in the past. The thing that we considered was an HSA, which is a different model. The HRA actually goes away at the, in this case, be at the end of the calendar year. The HRA goes away, and HSA is actually a healthcare savings account, which stays with the employee even if they leave employment with the city. But the HRA is, it's been in place since I've been here at the city, and this would propose to keep that in place. The only difference with the HRA is if an employee chooses the higher deductible plan, their HRA would go up the commensurate amount, so it would go up $1,000 if they chose the deductible that was 3,000 rather than 2.
Thank you.
Councilmember Doughton.
Just more, so with the 10% savings, will that be on the city's side, or will it go trickle-down effect for the match for the employee also?
Mr. Ostrander.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Doughton, the savings will be shared by both the city and the employees.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
Request unanimous consent.
Unannounced consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, Resolution Number Two Thousand Twenty-two dash seventy-six as amended is adopted. Next up, we have Resolution Number Two Thousand Twenty-two dash seventy-seven, authorizing the sole source purchase of a Team Eagle Edge Light, Runway Edge Light Cleaner Attachment from BSI Equipment LLC for the Kenai Municipal Airport through the Federal Aviation Administration Airport Improvement Program, grant number three dash oh-two dash oh-one-four-two dash oh-seven-two dash twenty-twenty-two, and issuance of a purchase order, pleasure, council. Councilmember Nexton.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Twenty Twenty-two dash seventy-seven.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Resolution Number Two Thousand Twenty-two dash seventy-seven? Is there anybody online? Nobody online, nobody in chambers? Bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Councilmember Nexton.
Thank you, Mayor. This looks like a pretty neat attachment. It took me a little while staring at it, how it works, but I was wondering if it might be okay for the airport manager to kind of describe how wonderful it is for us.
Mr. Elen through Mr. Ostrander.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, through the city manager. Councilmember Nexted. So this attachment is manufactured in Anchorage, Alaska by BSI Equipment, and they've teamed up with Team Eagle, a Canadian company, to make this available globally. I believe this is the fourth generation of this attachment. They've done extensive testing at Jay Bear over the last couple of winters and have since refined it. The real benefit to the airport is the amount of labor and equipment that, reduction in labor and equipment that's required to clear around the edge lights. It reduces the pieces of equipment by half. It'll obviously reduce the amount of fuel by half, the amount of labor by half. And that's just anecdotally, I suspect it will actually decrease the costs of clearing around the edge lights even more. What it really does is it allows us to leverage an existing piece of equipment that we already have at the airport, and this will attach to that and allows one operator to be able to do the work of what would actually be three operators at Anchorage International Airport.
And then I had a question, because I did, I appreciated the YouTube link that you provided in the packet, and I did click on that. It looked pretty neat, but it appeared there's two different types. It looks like there's a loader-type attachment and then a blower-type attachment. Could you say which one you guys opted for, or was it the blower attachment?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, through the city manager. That loader-type attachment, I believe it attached to a Bobcat, and that's something that Eagle designed years ago, and I don't even know if they actually manufacture it. This attaches to the snow blower that we already have.
Okay. Yeah, the link looked pretty neat. It just, hopefully there'll be some training for the operators, because it looks like there's a pretty small tolerances there, so you could actually be taking out the light with the snow, so.
I think the tolerances are much larger than the tolerances of a road grader.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Further discussion?
Request unanimous consent.
Thank you. Unannounced consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, Resolution Number Two Thousand Twenty-two dash seventy-seven is adopted. Under unfinished business, we have none. Under, that brings us to item G, business, under new business, item G six, action approval confirmation, confirmation of mayoral nomination for appointment to the Harbor Commission. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Askin.
I move that we confirm the mayor's nomination for appointment to the Harbor Commission.
Is there a second?
Request unanimous consent.
Thank you. For the record, that's John Costin, so.
Yes, and he's in the.
Yeah, and he is, thank you for showing up, Mr. Costin. Unannounced consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, Mr. Costin is confirmed to the Harbor Commission. Thank you for your volunteer, willingness to volunteer. Which brings us to, I'm working off of a different agenda here, so, committee, commission, commission committee reports, council on aging.
No report, no meeting.
Thank you. Airport Commission.
The last meeting was held on November 10th, and I was in attendance at a special meeting, a council meeting. Next meeting is December 14th.
Thank you. Harbor Commission.
We did meet. We didn't have a quorum, so not a lot was discussed, just about future plans and the future work that's going to be done for the float. So they're going to be working on some new float improvements this summer. Other than that, we didn't have a quorum, so we scheduled our next meeting, I believe it's February 6th timeframe, first part of February, so.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. Parks and Rec met on November 3rd. They discussed the capital improvement plan and the recommended approval in their portion. Their next meeting is December 1st.
Thank you. Planning and Zoning Commission.
Nothing to report on Planning and Zoning Commission. Their next meeting is November 23rd, 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Beautification Committee. Councilmember Winger still on?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Beautification Committee has not met. We will meet again in January.
Thank you, Councilmember Winger. That brings us to the report of the mayor. I will say that I did, I was asked to say a few words to speak at the Veterans Day Celebration at the American Legion on Veterans Day, was there with several other local folks. And I tell you, I just wanted to, one of the things I really can't turn down to just take a moment and say thank you for all the veterans that sacrificed along with their families to provide the things that we enjoy in this country, and certainly had a great time over there. I was a little disappointed that there wasn't more people there. They haven't had an in-person one. They'd done it for several years over at the cemetery, and we brought it back to Kenai because there was COVID restrictions that had sort of limited their ability to hold that event over until now in the last couple of years. But it was nice to have it back in Kenai. It was very well, they decorated quite a few people there. I always think that there should be more in those things. We should not take the freedoms we have for granted, at least take a minute to thank the folks that have helped provide those freedoms. But loved having, it was a wonderful day over there. They served a great meal, and it was definitely worth it. I'd like to thank Vice Mayor Beazin for his service to our country, and he was there also. It was nice to hang out with him. I also attended the Boys and Girls Club fundraiser last Saturday night. Very well done, a lot, very, I can't believe the work they put into decorating the old Cars Mall. I don't think I've ever seen it that elegant, I guess you could say, and very well attended. And by looking at what they, how they did on the bidding and some of the other stuff, I think they did very well, which is good to see. They did take a minute and did some announcements and thanked the city of Kenai. They were very appreciative of the land donation that helped them facilitate the sale of the care center. And they did mention that they had a Halloween event over there that drew like 3,000 people, so that was amazing. And so hopefully that just gets bigger and better every year. And then just wanted to mention, there's information on that, last Tuesday, this past Tuesday, we had our last bike catcher task force meeting, finalized our, went over, it was more of a work session with just the task force to finalize the final report that'll be going to the governor's office. So it should be out, I think probably within, by the end of the month, there should be a report, a published report that will be going to the governor's office with recommendations from the task force. And with that, that concludes my report, and with that, I'll move it to administration reports. City Manager, Mr. Ostrander.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. So wanted to let council know that we've been having some internal discussions and refining our process for how we want to approach condemnation of certain properties within the city. There's multiple properties in the area that likely should be condemned. So we're looking to continue to pursue condemnation of those when appropriate. It's multiple different departments that need to be involved, but I just want to give you a heads up that we are looking at that, and you will likely hear or see of some of these, these buildings being condemned when it is appropriate. We started work with the Kenai's Indian Tribe on an MOU, which is really exciting for the city. So we've been, you know, we've been trying to foster this relationship and grow the relationship with the Kenai's Indian Tribe. We have the joint work session with their tribal council on January 4th. I did meet with administration and also Chief Pryor, and we're looking to enter this MOU that'll allow them to take the lead on a grant proposal to replace our Kenai Fire Department ladder truck. So our ladder truck is about 30 years old. It's near the end of its useful life, and there's some really good opportunities, particularly with the tribe taking the lead on these proposals to get a significant amount of grant funds towards the replacement of that vehicle. So again, exciting, great group of folks that we met with the tribe that were really excited about starting down that path. And we had our leadership training yesterday that we've been doing as a city. We've got about 20 folks, like I've said before. We started in early October. This was the second time we've met. This actually ends at the end of February. Yesterday's training was three hours. It was by Zoom, and I typically hate Zoom meetings, but I actually thought it was very engaging and helpful. It focused on accountability in the workplace, which I think is something that's really interesting to discuss with all of, all the folks that are involved in that, you know, as leaders of our organization. And Buff Project, no update, although thank you for approving the acquisition of that property tonight. That's a next step towards getting all of that land acquired, either through fee simple acquisition or easements to make this project a reality. So that's all I've got, but happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, the city manager? Seeing none, we'll move to city attorney, Mr. Bloom.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, council members. I just have a short report. As far as the, council passed a resolution authorizing the city to negotiate with the current delinquent local improvement district owners. There was nine of them. One of the properties sold and settled. Otherwise, I tried to phone every, all the other eight, as well as sent everybody a certified and letter through regular mail. So far, two people have come in and met with me. I think one might sign, but that's the extent of it to date. That's all I have. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, the city attorney? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move to city clerk, Ms. Sener.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. So I just wanted to give you guys a quick update. Marijuana licenses renew annually, and the process begins in June and ends in August. And we realized that we hadn't received any notifications regarding any of the renewals in our city, so Amco was contacted, and they have not had a staff, and they've had one person multitasking. They recently filled the position. All the existing licenses were continued, but there's one person now starting to process all the state licenses. So we will be getting them eventually. And also Deputy Clerk Thibodeau and I will be in Anchorage for the Alaska Association of Municipal Clerks Conference on December 5th and 6th, and that is our report.
Thank you. Any questions of the city clerk? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move it to additional public comment. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to address the council at this time? Mr. Egg.
Again, my name's David Hag, and again, thank you. I would like to think that you guys have some questions about kind of what I talked about, primarily whether there's any prior history of any, anyone trying to insert in or maintain a biased attorney as a grand jury's counsel, and what the proper entity is for citizens to ask to help to address something like this. A book was just written by an attorney in Juneau that's following what's going on up here. He says they have the same problem in Juneau. Book's called The Alaska Grand Jury: Its Historical Common Law Development, Its Power to Investigate Anything of Public Concern, and Its Suppression by Alaskan Officials Who Fear Its Independence. And I'm just going to go over a couple of quotes in it, and maybe then again, ask for your help. In California, in an instance kind of like this, a quote is, "The logjam began to break when a citizens committee headed by a crusading newspaper editor, influential civic leaders," that's yourself, "and an honest district attorney were able to persuade a judge to discharge a controlled grand jury and select a new panel with the help of a special prosecutor and detective. The political machine responded by trying to oust the district attorney and appointing one from their own ranks." And that's what I fear has happened with the Kenai Grand Jury. In a courtroom hearing that drew a large public audience, the judge instructed the grand jury to act without fear, favor, or affection, saying there is, quote, "no higher duty divulged on a citizen." New York City, another instance, the grand jury asked the governor to fire the district attorney and give them a special prosecutor to assist the investigation. They barred the district attorney from their meetings and started drawing up names of potential replacements. The district attorney responded by withdrawing his staff and agreeing to have one of his cronies appointed as the new prosecutor. However, the grand jury refused to accept the substitute, and the governor eventually appointed Thomas Dewey as special Here's a grand jury in Alaska back in the mid-eighties with Governor Bill Sheffield. This is what happened with them. The jurors revealed that at times they met in unrecorded work sessions without the prosecutors and deliberated on their own. At other times, they called and recalled witnesses. The prosecutors had not planned a call. They made the decision to grant Mr. Sheffield's chief of staff immunity from prosecution so they could force him to testify. They wanted to get to the bottom of the truth as well as possible. This is another thing from the Sheffield investigation. Precedents for the retention of special counsel from outside Alaskan grand jury investigations involving the state of Alaska is firmly established in the Sheffield investigation. The state government paid for the services of George Frampton to be the special counsel for the grand jury. As Mr. Frampton was a former Watergate prosecutor and presumably a top caliber attorney, the amount of expense to retain a quality attorney from outside should not be an issue. Anyway, I know this is not what you guys normally do, but this is incredibly serious. You guys have helped get a ball going that may protect Alaskans for maybe centuries into the future, and we have a grand jury that is there. I've testified to them twice now. They are trying to do the right thing, yet they have an attorney there that has a direct conflict interest, I believe, and I'll leave you the paperwork that I believe proves that. I don't know what you can and can't do. I'd like to maybe sit down with some of you and discuss options, and maybe like your attorney to weigh in on whether he thinks this is a conflict of interest, maybe another resolution from you, letter of support. Anything would be helpful, but probably more than anything is just public awareness of what's going on. This is, this is incredibly serious, I believe. Anyway, if you've got any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them.
Any questions of Mr. Hag? Councilmember Dowd, Sonar rather, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Just for clarification, are you referring to the grand jury that meets here in Kenai, or the grand jury that meets in Anchorage?
Nope. It's a, I believe it's a special grand jury here in Kenai, and by special, I mean it's not the normal grand jury. I believe this one has been formed solely for the purpose of investigating this. They don't do any indicting to anyone else. It is a full-blown special grand jury like was formed to investigate Watergate. With the Watergate grand jury, they had no other duties except to investigate those, that issue. Our normal grand juries here in Kenai are formed, they meet one day a week, and they do no investigation. They just indict people based on investigations already done by the prosecutor and law enforcement. This grand jury, I believe, is not that, and I don't know for sure, but I know they're meeting a whole bunch of days in a week, that if they were also doing the indicting part, basically they would have, they'd be out of a job, so. Anyway, I don't know if I confused you or not, but they are, they are attempting to do something that they're going to need the public support to pull off, and it is, it could, you know, I think I gave each one of you packets of the evidence against Marla Greenstein, the judge investigator. I gave them the same packets, and, you know, during the, my preliminary testimony to them, the four hours, that was whether they would not, whether or not they would do a full-blown investigation, and they did. Three months later, they subpoenaed me. I'm now on permanent subpoena to them, and according to clerk, they subpoenaed a bunch of other people. Then they actually requested via email for all the contact information for all the people that know about Marla Greenstein. And in that packet I gave you, there was a bunch of affidavits from folks that refuted what Marla Green, all those people, all the contact information for all those have been subpoenaed. My one concern, the only reason I'm here today, is that I don't think someone who, while employed by the Department of Law, investigated Marla Greenstein and exonerated her, should be assisting a grand jury who is redoing that investigation. That's why I'm here, so I'm asking for your help. I will give you, like I said, the letter from, his name's Clint Campion, back in two thousand twelve, where he did a, he personally investigated Marla Greenstein, gave her Cleanville Health, and, you know, the subpoena to me, that's in Clint Campion's name, so anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hag. Is there anybody else from the general public that'd like to address the council at this time? With that, we'll move to council comments. Councilmember Dowd.
Well, I guess a couple things, just to touch on the Boys and Girls Club fundraiser, things that I picked up on there. Sounds like the care center redonated back a hundred thousand dollars back to the Boys and Girls Club, which I thought was pretty incredible after they closed the deal. And then they did mention that they were on the shortlist, if not already authorized, it sounded like, from, I think it was four point seven roughly million dollars from the Lisa Murkowski's, was work that they're working with her for funds allocated to them. They did make an announcement about that, so they do have quite a few funds, looks like, coming for further projects on that. So it was, it was a good event. I was there, it was a lot of money was thrown out there in support of the kids, and it was pretty impressively decorated also. Also, the week before that, the Chamber had their, their event. We helped out a bunch with that. A lot of the Chamber board members stepped up and their significant others to help out, pull that off, short-staffed and all, and I think they pulled off a pretty good event, and they may ended up making a little bit more money than they did last year, so that's always a good sign to see growth in that, and I think it was a good event, had a lot of good comments on that. And then I think we're having another meeting for the Chamber on the eighth of December. We're hoping to have the new job posting for the new director and one other position at the Chamber posted, and before that, so we can still hopefully start getting some applicants. That's pretty much it.
Yeah, I agree. My mind's a little rumbling. I thought that Chamber event happened before our last meeting, but it happened after our last meeting. I did attend that, too. It was well done.
We've had a couple of meetings in between here and there, too.
Well done, yeah. I'm getting a little rumbling here. Senator Representative Thibodeau.
Thank you, Mayor. I know it's been a while since I've last been here, and that is my fault. My life has been very hectic recently, but in terms of the school, we have had quite a few things go on. We had a drama performance Monday and Tuesday. I was in the Monday cast. It went very well. I enjoyed it a lot. I'm sure you've all heard over the radio as well that the Kenai volleyball team went undefeated, state champs, so we love that. And as for other news in KCHS, the esports team for League of Legends and Smash Ultimate have both qualified for state. We are both in third place respectively for the entirety of the state, and we look forward to playing in that, and nothing else, I believe, to say.
Oh, we're gonna have to have a talk. We're gonna have to have a talk. Yeah.
Let's go Brown Bay.
So.
I know the JV team won.
They did. They beat Saldana one to nothing. Yes, I was there. And just so you know, I started at that end, so you wouldn't be scooped by Vice Mayor Basin on the volleyball thing, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember.
Pretty spectacular.
Councilmember Sonar.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I would just like to thank all of the veterans for their sacrifice and for their service to our country, for the freedoms that we get to enjoy each day, and to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving next week.
Thank you. Councilmember Raskin.
I also would like to thank our veterans. I have the privilege of getting to go to Montana and take care of my ninety-one-year-old veteran dad, so I'm looking forward to that. I, too, attended the Chamber Commerce fundraiser, and I missed seven hundred and fifty bucks by a tail. That was pretty frustrating, but anyway, happy Thanksgiving and Merry Christmas. Thanks.
Councilmember Winger. Is Councilmember Winger still on? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I would just as well like to say congratulations to the Lady Cards volleyball state champs. They had an amazing season. They set goals, and they are proof that setting goals and working hard will accomplish great things. So just to like to congratulate them again. Thank all our employees for their hard work, everything they do for our city, from our emergency services to our roads, to our senior services. Things wouldn't be functioning and as great as they are without their continued support and dedication to the city and our services. And I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and I will see you next meeting.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Basin.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving. Ditto for the Lady Cardinals.
Councilmember next then.
Thank you. Since we're having such a short meeting, I can go on for a while, right?
Please don't.
Yeah, we only started at eight, but this morning. I'll try not to. Just a couple of things. Wanted to thank Marion Nelson again for coming, and I did make it to the Art Guild. We had a meeting last Thursday, and their grand opening lasted until seven. We got out of here about six forty and ran over there, and it did carry on a little longer, fortunately, but it was, it was, it was very good. It was really cool how the mural, they always were kind of separate, but they kind of just melded together all the way around the room, and there was a couple that were kind of separate. But again, you know, it's there, and it's free. Go take a look. You'll enjoy it. I, too, went to the Boys and Girls Club fundraiser. Octopus garden was the theme, and I wondered what that was going to look like, and it looked like an octopus's garden. It was pretty amazing what the Machikis and others did to put that together, and I do believe that they probably made more funds that, on that meeting than I've, than I've ever seen them do in the past. And I suspect that has a lot to do with Royce Roberts and his donation, donation the city of Kenai made. They purchased the property, they're doing stuff and all of that, and it just, it starts up the energy for all of these groups, you know, a hundred thousand dollars you were talking about, but there were fifty thousand dollars, seventy, you know, those were just straight cash donations that were being offered up, plus all of the other things. So it was truly amazing, and I left there just really, really pleased for them. In your packet at the end, informational items, there's just a, it's a virtual race across Alaska flyer thing in there, and one of the fellows from Parks and Rec was, is involved with this, and I put it in the packet, if you're interested. I just wanted to point that out. The last thing is, since our last meeting, it got cold out, and then it warmed up, and then it slushed, snowed, and rained, and all that other stuff, and it made some pretty rough conditions for our streets, and the street, I was wondering what was going to happen with that, because then it was going to get cold again. Didn't quite, but the street department came through with the blowers, or graders, and blower again, and all that, and I thought they did a very, very good job. All the streets I was on, and, and it's really tough to wing the slush and all of that, but they did a very good job, and the roads are in pretty darn good shape everywhere I go. So if you'd thank the road department for me, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Tonight, we have no executive session or pending items. Seeing no other business before this body, we are adjourned.